Yeah.
There we go.
Hey, he got it.
Moving on to the meeting order, if you could please stand and recite the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, first item is adoption of agenda. I do not have any additions to the agenda, so if there are no other additions, I entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion made by Julie here, second. Seconded by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Just for the minutes and for the record, for those that are watching the recording out there, Philip Simpson is participating electronically and council member, council member Little is not here this evening. So, we do see his picture, which is required, and we also have him on audio. Next item is the presentation's minutes for approval. Counsel, you should have your June 6th, the June 20th is not quite ready yet, but you do have your June 6th minutes in here. If there are no questions regarding your June 6th minutes, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion made by Larry to hear second. Seconded by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes stand approved. Next item on the agenda is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to committee and board reports. We'll start with Ward 1, Councilmember Larry Kleeman.
I have a brief report. Let's see, I just wanted to thank you for all the paving that's going on in our ward and others, and also just to go to the city of work on Paul Street. As far as the, was that to get paid, did I get done with the policy also?
Did it get paid from roundabouts of Taco Bell, we'll say, all the way to Chuckles on the other end of town, pretty much all the way through.
Correct, correct. Appreciate all the work you're doing.
You're welcome.
That's inclusion.
Okay. Well, next up, we have Ward 2, Ms. Julie Conner.
I haven't heard either, other than I have had people mention that about the paving as well, but it's been quite a few, so.
It was our largest paving project all at once. I don't want to say in the city's history, but probably pretty close at once, you know, in that timeframe, yeah. And we're just getting started. We're going to put another application in this month for community crossings, round two. And we're actually going to be doing liquid road to the ceiling. That's going to, that should be done between now and September, somewhere in there. So, that's it. Liquid road, it's basically like you have a driveway and you seal it to help protect it from breaking down. We're going to try that on roads, but with a different type of, same type of material, but it actually has the, it's for roads, not for driveways. But that's a new pilot program we're trying. Jasper, Honeyberg, Princeton, a lot of communities have been doing this for years, and it extends the life of the roads. You don't have to go in and pave it and keeps it from breaking down, potholes developing. So, the hope is that we can do this to do some preventative maintenance and protect our roads, and eventually we can catch up on the whole city paving it, because it needs it. There's everyone's roads important, and you just got to try to do the best you can to get to them when you can. We've got alleys eventually, which there's no grant money for alleys. That literally comes right out of our general fund.
There's, there's only any paving, the smaller is all being done now.
Um, no, all of our paving is done for the year. There'll be patching still. There's a lot of patching. The liquid, the liquid road, that will still be done this year, and then obviously the state will probably be paving 12th Street this year, hopefully still. I don't know for sure if it'll be this year or early spring, but.
I know the plan, the plan is to pave after they get all of the, the crosswalks done, and they're, they're obviously working pretty feverishly at those.
They're doing good.
I don't envy them the hundred three days to do it.
Anything else, Julie?
Um, there's certain areas. There's, there's some out by Joe Schaper Park, I think. Yeah, there's some dead inwards up on 11th and 12th Street. We're going to try those too. There was a lot of patching done up there from the gas company. We just paved a lot of that area, so we're going to try to liquid road it to unify the whole area so it's done. I can't remember if Petzalazi's Park or not. I can get you the list if I could see. It's not a long list, because it's, we're trying. It's a pilot thing. A lot of communities, their street department actually does it, which I don't, I mean, I'd love to see our street department try it in the future, but it being new, someone's got to train them, they got to see it done. I don't want them to try it out for the first time and it not go well. So, it's, I think it's better to hire a professional this time, and we'll see how well that works. Anything else, Julie? All right, we'll move on to Ward 3. We have Philip Simpson here, participating electronically. So, Philip?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just part, I guess it's my partners in pride, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's Adam Everard and family.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
Adam Everard lives on 34th Street, 33rd?
33rd, I believe.
Next, next door to Chief, I know.
Yep, yep.
Kind of behind Ivy Tech.
He can show that stuff.
Okay, great, all right. Anything else, Philip?
That's it.
All right, thank you, Philip. All right, move on to Ward 4. We have Gary Morton.
Okay, solid waste. Our director, Chris Weaver, she had a part-time position working there, and this is a hidden job. We hired, she hired someone in her position, like a part-time position there, two weeks, one hour a week. The branch cell site, which there was some environmental issues there, it's been taken care of. I am on board with that. So, that site's in good shape. PCDC, you've got to be answered this morning. The, this is my lights here. October 1st will be the farm-to-table dinner. They've had that for a few years, and COVID put that on hold, and it will be back on 9th Street this year, October 1st. Now, they had plans to possibly move the county, perhaps Derby, or very possibly, that's pretty around the county, this year, just back on 9th Street. And it's a fundraiser in Delphine, the FAA, as youth farm organization, and also, I think, the football team, which waits on tables and does some network, they make it part of the road system. Childcare was a necessity. Childcare thing is doing quite well, and it's a problem hiring people. Still looking for an executive director, executive director there. And the state increased the immersion for what's called vouchrages. The only thing is, is, and this is limited before we qualify for that. The state's basically doubled the rate of vouchrages in Perry County. And the state is actually waking up to the fact that, you know, if we want to have people able to work, you have to provide child care. People who can't just leave their kids, you know, kids. And so, the state's got to, you know, if anyone people lose their jobs and so forth, childcare is just as important as you can add one without the other. Training rides are going well. I'm downtown there on Saturday night when we had the farmers, large number were riding the train, and they have to get their rides planned all the way into like, in October, at least, and all, all these seasons as well. The mental health coalition is working in Perry County, trying to increase availability of services. You know, that's always an issue. It's very costly, and if you leave the services, probably we can't afford them. Trying to work with the area counties, and not just Perry County, but maybe surrounding counties as well. And that's about it.
All right, thank you. All right, any statements or comments from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on, and our old business item A, resolution for tax abatement for HBS LLC. Jeff, I will let you take care. That should be your top one here, I believe.
Yes.
This is Resolution 2022-18, correct?
Ron is here. As the council knows, we adopted the initial resolution at our last meeting. We published the notice that it would be called for final resolution at this meeting. I do not believe there's anybody else here, any remonstrators, anybody here in opposition. And so, the final step for the council would be to adopt the confirmatory resolution to put the abatement in place.
Okay. So, this is a different resolution than before, right?
Yeah, yeah, this is really just to confirm the resolution that we previously adopted.
Ron, do you have anything you'd like to add or share, or before they, or Jeff reads the resolution and seek approval?
No, I just to let you know that we are on course to start as soon as possible. We have a meeting set up for the town already on the 20th. That'll be the final for the, the final from the, the city and the civil, the final layout and utility placement, things like that. So, we're on track to that. Calvin Cash is taking, you know, Cash and Ragger is taking care of the civil. Plans are after, will be probably submitted to the state tomorrow as soon as we finish this year. Our bank has all the legal work that we're going to close as soon as we have the subject to the abatement being approved.
Okay, great. Any, council, any questions for, for Ron? Jeff, if you want to go ahead and read Resolution Number 2022-18.
Resolution's a single reading, so I will go ahead with that. Resolution Number 2022-18, a confirmatory resolution approving abatement for HBS LLC. Whereas the common counsel of the City of Tel City, the common counsel, did on the 20th day of June 2022, adopt Resolution Number 2022-11, approving the application by HBS LLC under, under and pursuant to Indiana Code Section 6, 1.1, 12.1 at SEC. And whereas, as directed in said resolution Number 2022-11, notice of the adoption of said resolution of all disclosures required by Indiana Code Section 6, 1.1, 12.1-2.5, were duly published in the Perry County News on June 27th, 2022, in accordance with Indiana Code Section 531 at SEC. And whereas, as it appears in the records of the common counsel, no remonstrances or objections have been received, and the common counsel now may consider Resolution Number 2022-11, and having heard evidence thereon, and now being sufficiently advised in the premises, now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel that, Section 1, Resolution Number 2022-11, as adopted by the common counsel on the 20th day of June 2022, is now and hereby in all things ratified, approved, and confirmed, passed and adopted by the common counsel this 7th day of July 2022.
Okay, council, you've had the reading of Resolution 2022-18. Again, resolutions require only one reading, so if there's any other discussion, I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion made by Gary to hear second. Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much, and I'll, we'll be in touch. Appreciate it all, though.
You're welcome.
Thank you also, Wes, appreciate this opportunity.
You're welcome, thank you.
Good seeing you last Friday.
All right. Next item on the agenda is tax abatement for GCM Hospitality, and this is referring to Resolution 2022-19. We don't have anybody here from, from them for any questions, so.
I had a brief conversation with Joseph Glenn last week. He understands what's going on here. Joseph's been, I don't really know the best way to characterize it, other than he appreciates anything we can do. He understands that we're, we're in support of the project. In terms of this resolution, as you're aware, we adopted the prior resolution regarding, Ron's was the apartment, this one is the hotel. Ron's is a little bit different, because as you recall, Ron's is the 10-year abatement that begins with full abatement down to 10th year of no abatement, or 10%, however the math works out. This one here on the apartments was just a straight 50% for the entire 10-year program. But otherwise, the abatement, prior resolutions were exactly the same. So, that's the explanation.
Jeff, if you'd like to go ahead and read Resolution 2022-19, and then the council could have further discussion and decide on a vote.
Okay. Resolution Number 2022-19, a confirmatory resolution, resolution approving abatement for GCM Hospitality 1 LP. Whereas the common counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, common counsel, did on the 20th day of June 2022, adopt Resolution Number 2022-12, approving the application by GCM Hospitality 1 LP, under and pursuant to Indiana Code 6, 1.1, 12.1 at SEC. And whereas, as directed in said resolution Number 2022-12, notice of the adoption of said resolution and all of the disclosures required by Indiana Code Section 6, 1.1, 12.1-2.5, were duly published in the Perry County News on June 27th, 2022, in accordance with Indiana Code Section 5-3-1 at SEC. And whereas, as it appears in the records of the common counsel, no remonstrances or objections have been received, and the common counsel now may consider such Resolution Number 2022-12, and having heard evidence thereon, and now being sufficiently advised in the premises, now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel that, Section 1, Resolution Number 2022-12, as adopted by the common counsel on the 20th day of June 2022, is now and hereby in all things ratified, approved, and confirmed, passed and adopted by the common counsel this 7th day of July 2022.
Okay, council, you've had the first, real, the reading of Resolution 2022-19. Again, resolutions require only one reading. So, is there any discussion on this resolution before asking for a vote, or entertain a motion?
It is, so it is going to be set up differently. I haven't done the math to see dollar for dollar if it works exactly the same way. As you're aware, usually the abatement starts at full abatement and then tracked down over years. Mr. Glenn had really just asked for simplification in terms of accounting, rather than having to do a recalculation each year. It'll just be a 50% abatement across the board. So, it's going to be much easier for accounting purposes. I think the net effect, well, the net effect to the city is more beneficial for the first couple of years and then less beneficial for the last couple of years, but the same effect over a 10-year period.
I think it's because he's investing every three or four years.
I, all I really, the only explanation, and I'm far from an accountant, so that's why I pay somebody else to do my taxes. But, but really, as I said, it was just simplicity of accounting. The calculation is just going to be an easy number to calculate every year. You figure out what the taxes would be, divided by 50%.
Any other discussion? If there's no discussion, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Larry here, second. Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion again? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, moving on. Ordinance for the Tel City Electric Department rate change under Item C under Old Business. We have Andy Hicks here, general manager for the Tel City Electric Department, and Paige here from the accounting side, office manager, county office manager, you know. There you go. I didn't know you were Zach Tyers. CFO, there you go. Sorry. So, you have the ordinance number 20 for this?
1190.
1190. So, this is going to be ordinance number 1190. Counsel, do you have any questions on ordinance 1190 before I have him vote to have Jeff read it? If there are no questions, I entertain a motion to allow Jeff Agarden to read ordinance number 1190, just for the first reading. Motion made by Larry here, second. Seconded by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Jeff, you may proceed with reading the ordinance number 1190.
For the sake of simplicity, I'm going to read the body of the ordinance and simply reference the exhibits. This is ordinance number 1190, and ordinance amending and restating the schedule of rates and charges for the Tel City Electric Department with terms and conditions for electric service. Whereas, the City of Tel City, Indiana owns and operates a municipal electric utility known as the Tel City Electric Department for the purpose of distributing electrical, electric energy and providing energy-related services to customer in and around the City of Tel City. And whereas, the Tel City Electric Department's existing schedule of rates and charges for electric services was established by ordinance number 1072, adopted on December 2nd, 2013, ordinance number 1122, adopted on April 3rd, 2017, ordinance number 1133, adopted on November 13th, 2017, ordinance number 1159, adopted on January 6th, 2020, and ordinance number 1187, adopted on June 20th, 2022. Whereas, on June 21st, 2022, the Board of the Tel City Electric Department forwarded to the common counsel copies of, number one, it's Resolution Number R220615A, recommending that the common counsel adopt a new schedule of rates and charges. A copy of Resolution Number R220615A is attached here to and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. And whereas, the common counsel now finds that, the rates and charges attached to the resolution attached here to as Exhibit A are nondiscriminatory, reasonable and just charges for services within the meaning of Indiana Code Section 8-1.5-3-8, and follow more closely the cost of service for the customer class described therein. And, the rates and charges reflect the common counsel's election to include in such rates and charges each of the elements of reasonable and just charges it considers necessary and appropriate under Indiana Code Section 8-1.5-3-8, including revenues sufficient to compensate the City of Tel City for taxes that would be due, the city on utility property where it privately owned, and to provide, provide the city a reasonable return on the Tel City Electric Department's net utility plan. And, number three, that the attached terms and conditions for the customer class described in the Exhibit A attached here to are needed and necessary to reflect appropriate credit arrangements to protect current customers from the high cost of financing new developments, and to provide adequate capital funds for the development of projects in a fair and equitable manner. Now therefore be it, be it ordained by the common counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the schedule of rates and charges attached as an exhibit, as an exhibit to Exhibit A attached here to is hereby amended and restated as and for the rates and charges to be utilized by the Tel City Electric Department. When charging the customer class described therein for electric service, for electric service are to be effective beginning with energy consumption that begins July 1st, 2022. Section 2, the Board of Directors of the Tel City Electric Department shall cause a review of its schedule of rates and charges to be made a minimum of each three years thereafter, beginning in 2026, and to report the results of that review to the common counsel of the City of Tel City. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, passed and adopted by the common counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, this 7th day of July 2022.
Okay, council, you had the first reading ordinance.
One note real quick, and I apologize, Philip, I got this in my municipal law seminar. You can't vote on a rate increase when you're, when you're remote, so.
I was just about to ask that.
That's, that is one thing I recall from my municipal seminar a couple of weeks ago, is that remote attendees can vote on most things, but nothing that changes a rate or a fee.
Okay.
Or a budget, that's correct.
But ordinances other than those things are okay?
We'd have just been passing a stop sign ordinance, you could be right up in there.
Okay.
You're off the hook, Philip. All right, so we've had ordinance number 1190, the first reading. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title. Motion made by Gary to hear second. Seconded by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Jeff, you may proceed with second, third reading.
Second reading, ordinance number 1190, and ordinance amending and restating the schedule of rates and charges for the Tel City Electric Department with terms and conditions for electric service. Third reading, ordinance number 1190, and ordinance amending and restating the schedule of rates and charges for the Tel City Electric Department with terms and conditions for electric service.
Counsel, you've had first, second, third reading, ordinance number 1190. Is there any further discussion before we call for a vote? If there's none, I entertain a motion to adopt. Motion made by Julie to adopt, is there second? Seconded by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right.
I would like to commend Andy and Paige for doing the work, because this is a complicated process of having to deal with utility receipts packs and then turn around and deal with this back to back. You guys have done a fantastic job on this.
Thank you all. Moving on to new business, payment in lieu of taxes. Counsel, you have Resolution 2022-14. This is going to be a resolution for payment in lieu of tax pilot. You know, you've all heard of that. Most of you have, I think. We've, I've got them. Jeff, do you have one? There's a bunch of them. Just note that we are going to lose Philip on Zoom here in a minute, not his fault, but we timed out at 40 minutes, and he's going to go away. You can still listen in, Philip, we just won't be able to see you. It may give you, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, trying to save money by not paying for that.
We have a, we have a.
The attorney can't read fast enough, and so, blame him. All right, so we have Resolution 2022-14. Jeff, you want to go ahead and start off with reading that one? These are payment in lieu of taxes. The first one's from the Tel City Electric Department, and then it goes back to water, wastewater, and I think that.
You want to do these one at a time or all at once?
You'll have to do them one at a time, because they have different amounts in them. I hate to tell you that.
Nope, that, that doesn't make more sense.
We can vote them all at once if you want, but I would just do one at a time.
I will begin with Resolution 2022-14, resolution authorizing the request for payment in lieu of taxes from the Tel City Electric Department. Whereas, the common counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, has advised that payment in lieu of taxes is now due to the City of Tel City in accordance with a formula approved by the State Board of Account set forth verbatim in a June 22nd, 22, 2022 letter to the city from the Tel City Electric Superintendent Andy Hicks. And whereas, the sum of $159,164.96, 90 cents, based on the city tax rate of $1.3256 per $100 assessed value for the tax period ending December 31st, 2021, is due for the payment in lieu of taxes for the year ending 2021 payable 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the City of Tel City, that the Tel City Electric Department is hereby directed to pay to the City of Tel City the sum of $159,164.90 for the calendar year 2021, which said some shall be deposited by the Tel City Clerk Treasurer into the general fund. Be it further resolved, the Tel City Clerk Treasurer is hereby authorized to execute and deliver an appropriate voucher requesting payment of the determined payment in lieu of taxes from the Tel City Electric Department, passed and adopted by the common counsel of the City of Tel City this 7th day of July 2022.
Okay, council, resolution would only require one reading, so if there's no other discussion, we entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2022-14. Motion made by Julie here, second. Seconded by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
He's gone now.
He's gone, okay.
Philip, you're still there on my phone, right?
Yeah, I can hear.
You can listen, but you just won't be able to vote on these. Because you have to actually be able to see you, and that's, that's my fault.
Not getting to vote on the money coming in.
I'm sorry. I'm glad you're listening, although it's important to be, you're still participating. You can still ask questions and concerns. Don't, don't think, don't stop from doing that, please.
Go ahead with the next one?
Yeah, Resolution 2022-15.
Resolution 2022-15, resolution authorizing the request for payment in lieu of taxes from the Tel City Water Department. Whereas, common counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, has advised that payment in lieu of taxes is now due to the City of Tel City in accordance with a formula approved by the State Board of Account set forth verbatim in a June 1st, 2022, letter to the city from Tel City Water Superintendent Britt Badger. And whereas, the sum of $80,826, based on the city tax rate of $1.3256 per $100 of assessed value for the tax period ending December 31st, 2021, is due for the payment in lieu of taxes for the year 2021 payable 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the City of Tel City, that the Tel City Water Department is hereby directed to pay to the City of Tel City the sum of $56,405 from the water operating fund and $24,421 from the Wapaka Fund for the calendar year 2021, which said some shall be deposited by the Tel City Clerk Treasurer into the general fund. Be it further resolved, the Tel City Clerk Treasurer is hereby authorized to execute and deliver an appropriate voucher requesting payment of the determined payment in lieu of taxes from the Tel City Water Department, passed and adopted by the common counsel of the City of Tel City this 7th day of July 2022.
Okay, council, you've had reading of Resolution 2022-16. Any questions regarding this? Hearing none, or entertain a motion to approve? Motion made by Gary here, second. Seconded by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, 2022-16. You know, Gary Morton should read these. He's got his name in there.
Resolution Number 2022-16, resolution authorizing the request for payment in lieu of taxes from the Tel City Wastewater Department. Whereas, the common counsel of the City of Tel City has advised that payment in lieu of taxes is now due to the City of Tel City in accordance with a formula approved by the State Board of Account set forth verbatim in a May 31st, 2022, letter from the, to the city from Tel City Wastewater Superintendent Chris Toothman. And whereas, the sum of $201,276.65, based on the city tax rate of $1.3256 per $100 of assessed value for the tax period ending December 31st, 2021, is due for the payment in lieu of taxes for the year 2021 payable 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the City of Tel City, the Tel City Wastewater Department is hereby directed to pay to the City of Tel City the sum of $195,238.35 from the wastewater funds and $6,038.30 from the stormwater funds for the calendar year 2021, which said some shall be deposited by the Tel City Clerk Treasurer into the general fund. Be it further resolved, the Tel City Clerk Treasurer is hereby authorized to execute and deliver an appropriate voucher requesting the payment of the determined payment in lieu of taxes from the Tel City Wastewater Department, passed and adopted by the common counsel of the City of Tel City this 7th day of July 2022.
Okay, council, we've had reading of Resolution 2022-16. Is there any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, a motion to approve. Motion made by Larry here, second. Seconded by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next up, 2022-17.
Resolution 2022- Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, resolution authorizing the request for payment and lieu of taxes from the Telsi Housing Authority. Whereas the common council of the city of Telsi has advised that payment and lieu of taxes is now due to the city of Telsi in accordance with a formula approved by the state board of accounts set forth verbatim in a June first, twenty twenty-two letter to the city from Housing Authority of Telsi. And whereas the sum of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents based on the city tax rate of one point two, one point three two five six per one hundred dollars of assessed value for the tax period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one is due for the payment and lieu of taxes for the year twenty twenty-one payable twenty twenty-two. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Telsi that the Housing Authority of Telsi is hereby directed to pay to the city of Telsi the sum of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents for the calendar year twenty twenty-one, which said some shall be deposited by the Telsi Clerk Treasurer into the general fund. Be it further resolved, the Telsi Clerk Treasurer is hereby authorized to execute and deliver an appropriate voucher requesting the payment of the determined payment in lieu of taxes from the Housing Authority of Telsi passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Telsi this seventh day of July, twenty twenty-two.
I didn't do that.
It said twenty twenty-one, but I read it as twenty twenty-two, and I have now put, I have marked a two on there.
All right, counsel, you've had reading of resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Are there any questions? If there are none, or entertain a motion to approve? Motion made by Gary here is second. Seconded by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's all of the payment and lieu of taxes under item A under new business. So we've done under new business, item B, additional appropriations. Additional appropriations resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Connie, you want me to do this one, or you want Jeff to do it, or?
This is all, just to explain, these are all out of the ARP funding. This is all the items that you have approved at previous meetings. So now we have to get the appropriation in place so that anything, any payments can be made on any of these items. And the, so.
You want to do it, Jeff?
I can read it.
Okay. This ain't too bad.
Yeah, additional appropriation resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one, be it ordained by the the city of Telsi, hearing none, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. ARP coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. ARP fund, nonprofit and small business. Requested sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Consulting services. I'm sorry, Connie, are those serial numbers or?
Those are the account numbers.
Yeah. I'm not reading the account numbers. Consulting service, sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Update Telsi website, ten thousand dollars. JFK pool expenses, twenty-five thousand dollars. City hall downstairs bathrooms, ADA, fifteen thousand dollars. Wendy Creek, thirty thousand dollars. Basketball court, Agador Park, fifteen thousand dollars. Joe Schaefer Park, twenty-five thousand dollars. Dog park, ten thousand dollars. Pickleball court, Agador Park, twenty thousand dollars. Restroom improvement, parks department, five thousand dollars. Beautification committee, five thousand dollars. Wastewater extensions, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Computer equipment, fifty thousand dollars. Trash truck, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Intrading radar unit, water department, twenty thousand dollars. Adopted this seventh day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Counsel, any questions regarding additional appropriation, additional appropriations resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen? Hearing none, or entertain a motion to approve? Motion made by Larry to her second. Seconded by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. That's all the new business, so we'll move down to mayor's report. Just one report with two new businesses that's open there in Telsi that I'm very proud to hear and see. First being is KC Supply and KC Electric. They're located down in what most people most know as the former Thriftway Business Building down on the other end of town on Main Street. Knows electrical supplies, tools, plywood, lumber, two by fours. Something we've needed in this community since Thriftway left many years ago. Couldn't make their hand opening because they have COVID and was in quarantine, so. I haven't made it down there yet. But I'm excited. I hope residents use it. This is something we need in this community. We've asked for this community, so I think we need to make sure we show its support. So I really hope. I agree.
I'm sure they will, or at the very least they will when they find out that they don't have everything they need.
Right. The building looks fantastic, and I want to thank the KC folks, family, for their investment in Telsi. We're really proud of them. And secondly, we had mascots. They just expanded. They used to be, I'll get into it in a minute. It used to be over in Parkview Hospital Building on the side there. They sell cards and game stuff for memorabilia, card, you know, baseball cards and collector cards. It's just right across the street in the former Katrina's. Katrina's upstairs resale shop. She just bought what used to be pedals and is moving her business down there, so she's putting a new roof on the building, she's painting it, and she'll be down there, but I want to thank mascots for all they've done. It looks nice in there. If you haven't been in there, Connie and I went to the grand opening yesterday, and Larry, did you make it in there yet, or did you, you admitted to the old one, but Jeff made it to the new one, right?
Yeah.
It's literally right across the street, next, next to Bursler Theric Isomrums. Yeah, where Hest Electric used to be. It's, it's really neat in there, so I want to thank them for their investment, and I'm bringing them up also because they are, they are going to be my partners in private this month. KC's was last month, and they're this month, so I just wanted to thank them for their investment. We kind of covered the paving I was going to talk about. They are starting this street skate project on Washington and Main Street. You may see signs up that says construction ahead, all that stuff. These were NDOT call grants that were obtained back in, one in twenty nineteen, I think the other might have been in twenty eighteen. You'll see ADA ramps, sidewalks replaced. You'll see street lamps put up that will match decorative what's already downtown. You'll see trees coming out, the trees going back in. These trees will be ones that are appropriate for the soil and the ground without buckling sidewalks, so that's exciting. They're going to start on Washington first. Hope to finish it up this year. And then go straight into Main Streets from what I understand. They should be starting on, they'll take the trees down all first, so you'll see those go quick. They'll grind out the stunts and everything. With Jefferson Street all the way to thirty-seven. Or sixty-six, or not thirty-seven, but Main Street. So it'd definitely make our community more walkable and safe.
Those existing trees are going to be taken out?
Correct. Main Street. Several are dead. I mean, so it's kind of nice to see them come out. Yeah, and then there's one down by Frost Stop that's pretty dangerous. I mean, it's skateboard ramp, it's so dangerous. So we're really thrilled. This is a partnership, a grant that we have obtained through NDOT, and this is the same type of grant that, you know, the sidewalks is going along Highway sixty-six. The six-foot sidewalks from Washington CBS on the east side to Williamtown Boulevard. It's the same type of program, same type of project. You get these grants, it's like five years out. So we're really excited for it, so I just want to update you on that. Again, we're going to apply for community crossings this month, so we're, again, we're excited for this. I have nothing else to bring up. Larry, you had one thing.
I have two.
Oh.
Two for a question. One is the, the trees that were planted on Main Street. Are the property owners responsible for trimming those, or are the city responsible for trimming those?
In the past, the city has trimmed and pruned them, so I am Katrina's reached out to me today about having, having that tree trimmed. And I told her I would talk to the street department Monday. Pat's out this week, rest of the week, he's on vacation. So I'll just talk to him on Monday and see if we can't get that tree trimmed and work on trimming the other ones, or if they're not capable of doing it, we'll have to hire someone to trim some of the rest. No, they are, they are, they're a willow tree. Yeah, oh yeah. Some businesses have trimmed them. Edward Jones, John Sheard has trimmed his. If you go by and see it, you can tell it, it's different than all the others, because he's taken it amongst himself to trim it, and that's fine. But we're probably actually, I don't know if the street department's going to be capable, because I don't think they have that type of lift or equipment to, you know, the trees aren't just, you know, just some shears, you know, do it. You would need a bucket truck or something. They don't have that, so we're probably going to have to get some type of professional services, Brooks, Yaman Arbacco. There's, there's one, I think, Greenhouse, I think they have a tree service too. Get some quotes prices from them, what they think they would charge to kind of prune the trees, and I don't know when a good time of year it is to prune a tree. No idea. I'm, I'm not that smart, so I'm going to rely on the people that are smarter than me to tell. Huh? There you go. You know, if it's obviously caused an issue, you have to trim it, then that's fine, but one of them needs to probably come down, which I, you know which one I'm talking about. So we're going to try to get a quote at that same time. It's unfortunate, but that tree for some reason grew like none other.
I understand, but second question is, and I know it's due to unfortunate emergency, the ARP committee meeting was canceled yesterday. Has a new meeting been scheduled?
Not yet. I'm going to reach out to the committee and find out, but maybe, certainly it's maybe next week if the schedules allow. I, we need to have one. And I want to get one in before our next council meeting, so if there's any amounts that are approved, we can have it for our next meeting on the agenda for consideration then. Because I don't want to drag it out, you know, I mean, I don't see why. Kelly, you're, she's, she's chairman, I mean, probably next Wednesday. I don't know what Connie's schedules and Danny and John's are like, but it's, it's possible next week would work. I mean, I don't know what your schedule's like.
Call Tuesday with.
Right. It might work out better because of that, because we'll have that information for that meeting. So Wednesday could probably be the best, keep it at the same time, so. It's a good question, Larry. Connie, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to point out to the council members that I did give you all the budget calendar for this year, so if you'll please mark the dates on your calendars so you know when we do have our, have our upcoming budgetings. I have, this week I did hand out budgets just today to the different departments, and the mayor and I are going to be giving you a handle and it's too important coming for you. And then also my live stream meeting, I forgot to bring out the claim documents for you all, so I'm here who's in the office deciding today. So if Larry or Julie can have time, sometimes get it, so you can stop in the office, I appreciate it. Our Philip.
Can you hear me? He might still be.
He might hear me maybe.
Yes.
Yeah, they can wait till Monday.
Philip's still there, he heard you.
Okay, well, somebody else, if somebody can stop in, I do apologize for, for forgetting to bring that up.
And we do have some personnel, things we're going to have to talk about, and that is an executive session we may have to have coming up soon, so I'll, Connie and I get with you more on that later. Nothing bad, but we just, some personnel issues that we need to address, I think, and go over, so we may have to. And that is allowed for an executive session, it's a personnel. So no decisions can be made, but discussion can be held. So we may be getting with you all on that, I'm sure.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And that's all I have, so if there's nothing else, honestly. Sure.
Whoever is doing all of the work on Wall Street. Like I just noticed, most of it looks really nice, and there's a couple that don't. Initially, I thought, although they're probably going to come back, and probably aren't, though, are they?
I'm not sure. Like ones they did, they didn't, they redone and didn't do a good job doing them back, or ones that?
I've not seen them back there.
Dirt and stuff, or concrete, oh.
Well, I would assume they'd be cleaned up, but that's, that's NDOT, and it's, yeah.
JDI? It's the one that's doing Main Street. JDI, same company.
I'm assuming that Pat has had some contact with their local folks on this project.
Well, we, we've got contact information in the office that they have, have given us. If there's issues or residents have concerns, we can even share that with them.
I did notice one or two spots when I was driving by, and I kind of thought, man, surely somebody at least had a problem. Yeah.
Yeah. I appreciate the state investing in Telsi.
My question is, some of those are already handicap accessible. Did the rules change, and why are we carrying up handicap accessible? What do you mean, more handicap accessible?
They've changed in some. Well, they changed, but also they may not have been built to correctly from the beginning. You know, I mean, this could be a ramp, I could put any ramp in like this, doesn't, you know, oh, it's a ramp. Doesn't mean it needs ADA requirements. I'm not saying this, I don't know. But the rules do change. Some may not have met the requirements.
Some of them might be, if nothing else, the, the depth of the concrete. Notice some of the, some of the curbs that they're replacing are the narrow six inch, and they've got like these nine inch curves now.
Some are required to have certain alerts when you, like the bumps and the things, some of them may have been missing that. I don't know. That's for visually impaired and also to slow down someone in the wheelchair.
I noticed, I noticed on several curves when they when they tore up, but on the, on Thirteenth Street, they put temporary ramps. So you could still have access to the sidewalk.
Yeah, they're, they're really trying.
I didn't know if that was NDOT or if that was Pat and his guys.
No.
Those are neat, though.
I saw, I, I thought, what?
You want to buy those for all places you don't have ramps?
I don't know.
Till a snowfall comes in.
It'd be very temporary.
And let's talk to all the groups in the state, though. Most of those ones are ever ones.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was thinking more long in terms of when Julie was talking about them not doing a good, good job. That's, that's not our city, folks, that's. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Larry here is second. Seconded by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meaning adjourn.